I'm going to call the order of the May 27, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chambers tonight. Also, I want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on their radios. This is your city government. We want you to get involved in any way you can, so, welcome. I'm going to ask the clerk, take the roll call, council members?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Hamsky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Pack?
Here.
Tower?
Now, I'm going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by Councilmember Herman, and we have some students who are going to help us with the pledge of allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Let's make this to clarify of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep our students up front. You can turn around there, so people can see you. Well, I would like to find out a little bit about you, since you came down to help us out tonight. So, I'm going to pass the microphone down. I want you to speak into the microphone and tell us what your name is, where you go to school, what grade you're in. We've got summer vacation that's right around the corner, pretty soon, so, what's something you're looking forward to this summer?
I'm Rowley Herrenberg. I am in third grade. I go to Lakeside Elementary, and I'm looking forward to going to Wisconsin Dells this summer.
My name is Megan Ox, and I'm, um... I'm in third grade, and I go to Lakeside Elementary, and this summer I'm looking forward to doing more softball.
Lots of recreation and physical activity this summer. I do have a certificate for each one of you, because we do appreciate the fact you've come and joined us this evening to help us out. We have a hand? Now, the students are welcome to take off and do whatever they want to do tonight. They don't have to stick around. Actually, the next thing on the agenda is some special awards that we do every May, the Acanthus Awards. And I think Shirley Maddox, who's a longtime member of the Landmarks Commission, is going to lead the presentations. The presentations have to do with some people who have engaged in activities with facilities they have that have done some really wonderful things, things that enhance the quality of life in the city. So, I'm going to ask Shirley to take the lead on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are you going to need this mic for anything?
Um, well, when we give the awards, you'll be up here.
Oh, I will?
So, you may want that.
Yes, I will. As you said, Shirley, you're the boss.
It has been a privilege to serve on the Landmarks Commission for many years. And the goal of the Acanthus Awards is to further preservation by identifying and protecting the city's cultural resources by calling attention to the cultural, economic, social, and historic heritage of our city. Since 1981, that's a while, the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission has awarded 98 Acanthus Awards to individuals, property owners, and organizations that have been involved in activities that enhance our historic and cultural awareness. We are honored to present four more Acanthus Awards in 1914. Where the hell's the time gone? Okay. The first award is going to be presented to the Christine Anne Center. It was former, it was, it is known as the James H. Wall House, built in 1905. And I'd like to preface this with a quotation from the Oshkosh Northwestern, April 22nd, 1905. J. H. Hall has let the contract to A.F. Miller for a fine new $8,000 residence at the corner of Elgoma and Light Streets, known as the Fowler Property. The street name has just been changed now to, it's now Division Street. This is a 16-room structure of most modern construction. It will be two stories with an attic, and will be finished in hardwood throughout the downstairs portion. The second story will be finished in hardwood and enamel. The style of plating plant has not yet been determined. The residence will be one of the most attractive ones on that part of the street. The plans were made by William Waters, the Oshkosh Dealey Northwestern. The addition undertaken by C.R. Meyer included alterations of a porch on an earlier addition, enclosing it and adding an elevator. This work was necessary for security for the shelter, residents, and for ADA access to the other floors of the building. In all exterior aspects of this addition, the 1905 design and style of the building were topmost priorities. The new addition matches the details of the 1996 addition and complements the existing 1905 structure by using split-faced masonry at the base of the wall, cut stone base cap trim, plaster finish and painted trim boards, wood lap siding, and finishes painted to match the adjacent existing elements. Julie Fivola, Christine Anne Center Director, said, quote, "The building is an important part of Oshkosh's history, and we are honored to put the home to good use. We are a public shelter, and many Oshkosh residents know the good work that is being done behind those walls, and they often comment on the beautiful facility. We feel we have a responsibility, being in a historic district, to maintain the facility and the property for the benefit of all Oshkosh." The Oshkosh Landmarks Commission congratulates the Christine Anne Center for successfully completing a functional addition to this historic property, using elements that continue to demonstrate the aesthetic elements created by William Waters in the original design. Congratulations.
Julie up here with me? I'll present it to Julie. Did you have anybody?
Oh, no.
Would you like to say something?
Just want to thank the Landmarks Commission and everybody in Oshkosh for supporting the Christine Anne Center. And as Shirley said, we take great responsibility and pride in the building and its historic nature, and we're very proud to call it home.
Thanks so much, Julie. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Jane here?
The next award is to Jean Sugar, 609 Jackson Street. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes Jean Sugar with the Acanthus Historic Preservation Award for her appropriate maintenance efforts that enhance Oshkosh history and protect our cultural resources through a complete painting of her residence at 609 Jackson Street, highlighting the architectural details of her home. This outstanding example of a small bungalow on one of the gateway streets of Oshkosh is a contributing structure in the Irving Church Historic District. The Sanborn maps show a large Queen Anne house here in 1903. The bungalow that now sits on this site was built about 1924, possibly by Kimball Clark, 603 Jackson Street next door, president of Oshkosh Citizens Loan and Trust Company. The story is that it was meant for his little daughter, Charlotte Marie Clark. However, she never lived in this house. The bungalow is constructed of stucco and clapboard. The lovely segmental arch marks the entrance. Jean used a color palette appropriate for the 1920s and highlights every architectural detail of the original wood and stucco siding. Some elements noted are the dentil molding and small round leaded window below the segmental arched hood over the main entrance. The leaded glass keyhole window highlights the front gable above the bank of five original windows. The long straight line of seven windows on the north side of the first floor and the basement with their original storm windows gives the house a lesson in perspective. Refer to as the Barnes House, city directories indicate Fred and Blanche Barnes lived here in 1926. Albert J. McKay and his wife Alice lived here in 1930, and Alice continued living here after Fred died until 1957. Edith Bach, a longtime reporter for the Appleton Post Crescent and member of the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission, lived here from 1974 to 1994 and maintained this architectural gem of the 1920s. The Landmarks Commission is recognizing this painting project, acknowledges the value of old-growth timber wood used in this and so many other Oshkosh homes, both interiors and exteriors. Jean could have taken a much easier approach, covering up or tearing off the valuable wood. Instead, she took the time to conserve and preserve the valuable timber of a bygone era. Her project serves as an example for all owners of wooden buildings to celebrate the architectural details, which she did so well, through preserving and using a varied color palette to draw attention to our historic heritage. Preserving our older and historic buildings is an essential means by which a community can achieve greater sustainability. Conserving buildings encourages the revitalization of our existing communities, and has also been proven to be a powerful economic tool. Congratulations, Jean.
Thank you, Jane. Is that good for you right here? Would you like to say it?
I would just like to thank the committee, who took time to recognize the house. I actually wondered if my house was the servant house to the one next door to me, so I guess I know it was possibly set up that way. So, thank you very much.
That's beautiful, and thanks for all your work on the house.
No servant house, that was a gem of a house. Our next honor is to Lynn Stefani, 301 and 301A East Irving Avenue. Her award is going to be accepted on her behalf by Karen Heickel. And Lynn is working 12-hour days, and her neighbors would have willingly come. One couple is up in Washington Island, and the other is, her daughter's leaving early in the morning for Kentucky, but the whole neighborhood is thrilled for this award. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes Lynn Stefani with the Acanthus Historic Preservation Award for her efforts to enhance and perpetuate Oshkosh history and historic resources by her complete painting project of her huge residence at 301 East Irving Avenue. According to the Sanborn maps of 1903, the house has a single-story front porch. In the 1932 to 1940 map, it shows the current two-story porch. The splitting of a house into a duplex unit possibly occurred about 1932 or '33, when the address was split at that time to 94 and 94 and a half East Irving Street. Earlier owners of this home, according to city directories, were Thomas Moore, a foreman at the Diamond Match Company with his wife Mary. They lived there from 1898. When Thomas died, Mary put in an ad in the Northwestern in 1906, hoping to sell or exchange for a less valuable property. It was a huge house for one woman. Robert Thompson, a commercial traveler, and his wife Lucinda lived there from 1916 to 1930, and during that time, Mary E. Meyer, a nurse and a widow, lived with them until 1924 on. Once the house became a duplex, it was vacant in about 1930, and then it became a duplex, and there were many owners and many residents who lived in this house. However, Tom and Lynn Stefani moved to Oshkosh in 1995, when Tom became the Parks Director for the City of Oshkosh. They purchased this home, whose walls have shared the couple's wide interests in gauging Oshkosh neighbors and friends, and Cajun musicians from faraway Louisiana. Tom and Lynn had started on the renovations to better reflect the historic character of their home. They removed the wide gauge siding and returned to the narrow siding of 100 years ago. Tom had his input in choosing the color. When Tom passed away in 2011, Lynn continued to rectify the many inappropriate additions made to the house over the years. The paint emphasizes the many details and draws attention to both vertical and horizontal lines. Today, it stands as a vibrant presence on the neighborhood street with a wealth of centennial homes. The Landmarks Commission, in recognizing this painting and renovation project, acknowledges the valuable growth timber wood used in many Oshkosh homes. Lynn and Tom could have taken a much easier approach, covering up this valuable wood. Instead, Lynn took the time to conserve and preserve the valuable timber. Her project deserves, serves us as an example for all owners of wooden homes, to celebrate the architectural details and quality. Lynn has preserved and draws attention to Oshkosh's rich historic heritage. Preserving our older and historic buildings is an essential means by which a community achieves greater sustainability. Conserving buildings encourages the revitalization of our existing neighborhoods and communities, and has also been proven to be a powerful economic tool. May this neighborhood continue to enhance one home at a time. Congratulations to Lynn Stefani.
Congratulations also. I'd say to Lynn and to Tom for all his contributions. I think most of you remember Tom as the Parks Director, and so, this is just another contribution together with Lynn. So, sorry Lynn can't be here tonight. Karen, I'll present it to you.
Thank you.
Our final award is to the oldest structure that we are honoring tonight, to the Richard Nasland family for the 317, 319 Market Street Buildings. We have a longtime resident businessman approaching. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission presents the Acanthus Award to the Nasland family for the commendable restoration of interiors of two historic structures located at 317 and 319 Market Street. The row of buildings along the west side of Market Street has historically been referred to as the Jewel Block or the Sawyer Jewel Block at Opera House Square. This three-story building housing 317 and 319 Market Street was constructed in 1876 and is located within the National Register of North Main Street Historic District. The exterior is an excellent example of the Italianate style, with elaborate hood moldings above the windows, the shape of which is repeated in brink along the front cornice of the 101 Elgoma Street Building. The shop at 317 is currently home to Salon La Russ. Primary jewelers were there back in the 1950s, and these buildings have had a host of wonderful businesses here, probably the longest. Here, the wood floors have been refinished and polished, and an entryway with blue and white tile has been left intact. The patterned tin ceiling, a popular alternative to plasterwork in the late 19th century, has also been exposed and painted. Brick walls from the original structure serve as reminders of the building's age. Now, the shop at 319 is occupied by Monument Square Barber Shop. Here again, the wood floors have been refinished, and the tin ceilings have been left exposed and painted. A traditional barber, a double barber sinks, has also been left intact, providing visual evidence of the space's long history as a barber shop. The Landmarks Commission thanks the Naslands for restoring the interior of these two shops. The Naslands have helped to preserve the beautiful interiors, further enhancing the North Main Street Historic District in our downtown.
Present your word to you. Congratulations.
I would also like to thank the Nasland family for the investment that they put into bringing back the preservation of the barber shop. It was a lot of hard work, and I appreciate it very much, and I enjoyed working there. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the members of the Landmarks Commission and our staff person, David Buck, for helping with our research and presentations.
On behalf of the council, I'd also like to thank you, Shirley, and again, Landmarks Commission and the members. So, thank you very much. Okay, citizen statements to council. This is a time when individuals can come up to the microphone, which is open up there, and let us know if there's something you're concerned about in the city, or something you're particularly pleased with. If you do want to come up, we'd ask that you give us your name, your address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council. Don't speak to anything else on the agenda tonight, and no electioneering. So, if anybody would like to come up, the microphone is open.
My name's Gary Gray. My address is 815 West Linwood. What I would like to talk about is economic development. For the last several months, the council has talked about various aspects of economic development and have done some various things, like assign a goal to the city manager to develop matrices to measure the investment in community development. The city also hired two people for Economic Development Section. One of them is Certified Economic Developer, which is a top certification for that type of activity, and then the ongoing process of establishing a Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Organization. I believe the next logical step is to have the city council, or the common council, have a workshop on economic development to have a coordinated effect on economic development within the city. There are many reasons to do that. I won't list all of them, because I probably couldn't, but a couple of them is, I believe it's important to identify the advantages, disadvantages that the city has in regards to economic development, and also identify various opportunities that the city may have to further develop economic development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come forward at this point?
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith Avenue. Wanted to take an opportunity tonight to speak to you for the last time as president of the Board of Directors of the Oshkosh Senior Center. Our bylaws call for term limits of six years. When I came on board, it was two terms of three years. Since then, we've made some changes because of the difficulty getting people to commit the three years. Currently, it's a two-year commitment for a total of three years, but still, at the end of six years, you'll be put out to pasture. So, I can truthfully say, will this affect the senior center or myself? And I guess I can say no. I will continue to be a strong advocate for seniors and people 50, age, and plus. It's been a very enjoyable ride, and it's always been hinted to me that, you know, you only got to take a year off, and we're going to have three MPCs next year. But who plans a year ahead? There's a lot of activities coming up that I'd like to just give you the benefit of a couple. This next Thursday, two days from now, is the last soup lunch. Outside of that, we move outside and start the grilling season, so if you're available and you're interested in some good baked potato soup, don't forget about us at 11:30, and come early, because we sell out fast. A date that I hope you can all put on your calendar, and I realize it's difficult, because it's a Saturday evening, but on June 21st, from 5:30 to 8:30, we're going to repeat something that we started last year, which is the Night on the River. Had a great experience with that last year. It's real a family event. There's a lot of games for the kids, boat pontoon rides on the river, food, you name it, music, everything will be there. So, if you get an opportunity, stop in and see what we've got to offer. A lot of people think about the senior center as card players, and that's about it, bingo players, but now that we're getting into the summer season, our walkers are getting out on the road again at 8:30 every Tuesday morning. They have a route of one, two, or three miles that they can participate in. The bikers are out for four weeks in June, and they bike anywhere from 5 to 20 miles on selected routes. So, there's still a lot of things that are happening that obviously couldn't be outside in the past season, but are certainly going to be part of this next season. And I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Roloff. He took time out of his busy schedule to come to our board meeting to present the certificate of six years to me. I very much appreciated that, Mark, but I heard there was an underlying reason, and that was because we were serving cake.
You're on to me, Bob.
In any case, happy to have you there, and I'm thankful you took the time to do it.
And thank you, Mr. Cornell. Thanks also for your service over the years. I trust we'll probably still see you back here at some meetings on some other issues. Thank you again. Anybody else care to come forward at this point? No one else coming forward to move on to the consent agenda items? The consent agenda is made up of what are considered to be non-controversial items that the administration puts together. In essence, the council will vote on it as a package unless either a citizen or a council member asks for an item to be removed from the consent agenda. If they do that, we will consider that as a separate item after we finish with the consent agenda. The approach will be for me to read through the consent agenda items. If you'd like to speak to a particular item, when I read through that item, I would ask you to come up to the microphone and provide us with your comments on that item. After that, we'll come back to the council for some discussion and questions, and then we'll have a motion in a second, and then we'll look for approval. Okay, approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from April 3, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. Mary Sidlow for sewer backup. AT&amp;T for damage to their phone terminal from a city lawnmower. Resolution 14-235, approve Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG for Police Department. Resolution 14-236, excuse me, approve purchase of programmable logic controller, hardware and software upgrade for water filtration plant in accordance with Section 1211. Yeah, and excuse me. Resolution 14-237, approval of agreement for engineering services with AECom Technical Services, Inc., for environmental monitoring and operations maintenance support at Timmerman Landfill. Resolution 14-238, approval of initial resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals various locations. Resolution 14-239, approval of variance to close portion of Wisconsin Street on Highway 44 from Church Street to Irving Avenue and establish alternate truck route during sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation work, June 2014, Wood Sewer Excavating, Inc. Resolution 14-240, award bid for digester cleaning and painting for wastewater treatment plant to Sernago Central LLC and Miller Coatings, Inc. Resolution 14-241, approve initial resolution authorizing not exceeding $15,130,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Oshkosh. Resolution 14-242, approve resolution directing the advertisement and sale of approximately $15,130,000 aggregate principal amount of Series 2014B, approximately $2,805,000 aggregate principal. principal amount of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2014C, approximately $8,485,000 aggregate principal amount of stormwater utility revenue bonds, Series 2014A, approximately $6,210,000 sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2014D, and approximately $3,950,000 water revenue bonds, Series 2014E of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin. Resolution 14-243, approve appointments to the following boards and commissions: Transit Advisory Board, Parking Utility Commission, Plan Commission, Grand Opera House Advisory Board, Landmarks Commission, Traffic Review Advisory Board, Parks Advisory Board, Committee on Aging, Board of Appeals, Library Board, Museum Board, Police and Fire Commission, Bid Board, Stormwater Utility, Extraterritorial Zoning Committee, Sustainability Advisory Board. Resolution 14-244, approve special Class B licenses. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or comments. Mr. Herman.
Just one question, Mr. Roloff, you could answer. We have the information packet under Resolution 14-237 for Timmerman Landfill. Could you give us the location of that? I know last couple of years, we've had some issues with, you know, the quarry park and we had to buy out some landowners and stuff, but this is actually in a commercial park, correct?
Yes, I'm going to have Mr. Pottek. He's much more familiar with it. I always have to remind myself annually about where Timmerman Landfill is.
Okay, under the background, we indicate that it's at the intersection of 35th Avenue and Marvel Drive, which is in the South Industrial Park.
Since we were awarding people for history on that, do we know where that name came from? Was that land owned by the Timmermans at one time and the city bought it? Does anybody know? Mr. Cummings, you're pretty good on the history side?
No idea.
But it's on 35th and Marvel, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That's in the industrial park, you said, right?
The South Industrial Park, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, I am with regard to Resolution 14-242. If Trina wants to come up or somebody would like to come up and just talk about the issues there and what we're doing with that money.
Sure. Our Finance Director, Trina Larson, as well as Todd Tase from Ellers Associates, is here to answer questions. I can just give you an overview. This is consistent with our capital improvement program for 2014, including approximately $9 million of that $15 million is potential refunding, or another popular term, refinancing of some previous debt. There's some 2004 debt and 2006 debt that there's a window in which we can consider an advanced refunding. So I'm not sure if Ms. Larson or Mr. Tase are going to address that issue, but $9 million of that $15 million is potential refinancing. Depending on what rates we get when we bid it out, we'll decide if it's, we know what the break-even point is to either take advantage of it or not. And at the opening, we'll be able to make that determination and make a recommendation to council.
Okay. Like to comment on where we are now and what the interest rates might begin to look like?
Sure. Right now, on a general obligation basis, 10-year money is right about 2%. So while rates have moved up from the lows that we saw a year ago, they're still, from a longer-term historical perspective, very good. 20-year debt, we're looking at general obligation interest rates more in the ballpark of about 3%. Some of the issues that you would be requesting we move forward with are utility revenue bonds. Those will carry an interest rate that is generally about a quarter percent higher than general obligation because of the nature of the credit. In terms of the plan going forward, we're having authorization granted for all of the debt issues, as the city manager noted, supporting your capital improvement plan for this year. We would only be moving forward immediately with the stormwater revenue bonds, Series 2014A. Our plan would be to seek a Moody's rating and take that to market and bring bids to you for your June 24th meeting. The remaining series of bonds would be sold in the month of September. Typically, the city has issued debt later in the year when its costs become a little more known as contracts are bid out. Those numbers can change and we'll adjust the bond size accordingly. But the stormwater utility does need cash soon, so we'll be moving forward quickly with that. And with respect to the refinance, the approximate savings given where the market is today would be about a quarter million dollars, a little more than that, in future value. And as was indicated, we don't know where the market will be in September when we sell, but we'll make a judgment call whether it still merits inclusion. If there's not appreciable savings, we would simply drop that out of the picture before going to market.
Okay. Any other questions, council members? Okay, thanks. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, I don't see anybody else raising their hands or indicating the desire to comment on the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second on the consent agenda.
So moved.
While I cover the class B liquor license, would I possibly make a comment?
No, no, no. Well, okay, actually on the class B liquor license? Sure, you can come up. Commented before, yeah, we'll do it before we do the motion.
That's actually later on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have an agenda. You let me know when my time is up.
His is on?
That's item 21.
Okay, he's on 21. He's not on the class B license.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, they'll let you know. Okay, so ask for a motion, second?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Laid over ordinance is ordinance 14-245, approve request to attach to city from town of Blackwell Portel Voluntary Attachment, southeast corner of Ripple Road and Oregon Street. If I'd like to come forward to comment on that. Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
The staff is asking that this item be held over again. The issues that we had not been resolved still have yet to be resolved. So we'd like you to lay it over to June 24th. We believe it will need that much time to get these outstanding issues resolved.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to lay over to June 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the layover to, what was the date, June 20?
June 24th.
June 24th.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Okay, a pending ordinance, ordinance 14-246, approve request to annex to city Hickory 6, annexation 2338 Hickory Lane. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? See no one coming forward, so I'll bring it back to the council for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-246.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Okay, that takes us to a new ordinance. This will need to be read at two consecutive meetings. Tonight will be the first reading. If you want to comment on it when I read it, feel free to come up and comment on it. We will consider it for a vote at the next meeting, so there will be a second opportunity to comment on it. So it's ordinance 14-247, approval of left turn regulations at Main Street and Merritt Avenue. Anybody like to comment on that?
My name's Gary Gray, 815 West Lindwood. This ordinance seems a little bit strange by the fact that the ordinance will prevent somebody going west on Marriott to turn south into the 300 block, which is a business area. And it just seems like there are perhaps other solutions to resolve the potential possible problem that preventing a left-hand turn would accomplish, like for instance, changing the street lighting signal system. It just seems like it's kind of strange to prevent traffic from turning into a business area. Thank you.
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith Avenue. I'm very happy to see this on air and I hope that you waive the rule so you can pass it as soon as possible. I have no animosity towards a council that passed this to allow left turns, but I seriously think they made a horrendous mistake when they did it. And I'm speaking from personal opinion. In the last three or four weeks, coming from the library, I was the second car in line and never made the light because of an individual ahead of me going to make a left turn. The traffic from the west is definitely more predominant than the traffic from the east. I understand the reasons for the downtown, especially the 500 block or 400 block there. Business people who would like to have more cars being able to make that left turn, but I think it's definitely a hazard, not only for the drivers coming from the east, but I think it's also a hazard for the pedestrian. So I hope you take a serious look at this and remove that left turn parking.
Thank you.
My name is Patricia Deener. I was at the traffic review board when they were talking about this and I had a friend that was there, Mary Schultz was there too. And when we were talking about it, there's a lot of people that travel that sidewalk. They go to the library, they go to the Y, and I'm really surprised that I finally noticed that you could make a left-hand turn, but I don't think it's a good idea. I really don't.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if any council members would like to comment?
Mayor?
Mr. Herman?
I sit on the traffic review board and that was a fairly lengthy discussion. As council members may see in their notes, it did get approved on a 4-3 vote. This ordinance was changed only about a year ago, little over a year ago, February 14, 2012 is when we changed the ordinance. It was, as Mr. Gray mentioned, it was for the downtown businesses that made that request. So I just think council, take a few minutes to look at the information that was provided before we vote on it next week. Mr. Collins gave us some information on the findings that 1,850 vehicles go through that intersection during a 12-hour period, 187 or 21% turn left. They analyzed peak traffic time for cycle failures. There are no cycle failures with the lights. There was only one accident at that intersection since we changed the ordinance. So before we vote on it, there's a lot of factors that are involved with this left turn. So just I bring that up. I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I know that the police department was also at the traffic review board and they didn't see a need to change it back, so.
Any other comment tonight? Otherwise, we will be looking at it for approval at the next meeting and for further comment. Okay, new resolutions. Resolution 14-248, approve annual city licenses renewals. I don't think this is it. Anybody like to come up? See no one come up. Bring it back to council, ask for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, discussions?
Just had one, one question, and I don't know if this is, excuse me, for Ms. Hubrig or Mr. Roloff, but Timbuk 2, is there, do we know if there is progress associated with that property? That was a property that had succumbed to a fire earlier in the year and I drove past it recently. I don't.
I have not heard of any progress. I can check on it and get back to you.
And I know it's only been four or five months ago, so the fact that it hasn't been a year yet, if it were to sit there through the remainder of this year, wouldn't be an issue we would take up.
Yeah, the fire was in January.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, based on that information, I'd like to make an amended motion to take Timbuk 2 out of that resolution until we have a solution. It currently is not in operation as a legitimate bar. There's been nothing, it appears that there's been no indication that they're moving forward to rebuild the facility or bring it forward. So I would not support voting in favor of granting them another year's license when we don't know if they're going to even be in operation during that time. So I guess I'll make a motion to amend the resolution, take them out of that. Till we have further information, we can, you know, obviously pass it at a later time.
I'm going to ask city clerk and city attorney just for some advice on that. We were to take it out without approving it, what's the consequence of that? I want to do that before we get the thing on the floor.
We can contact the license holder and she can get, or they can give us a status of it. I can get back to you on that for the next council meeting, or we can invite her to come forward.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Herman's motion?
Second, second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to remove Timbuk 2 from the license renewals. Anybody like to come up and speak to that at this point? See no one coming up and speaking to it. Any other questions, comments by council members? If not, ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the amendment to Resolution 14-248, remove Timbuk 2 from that at the current time.
Just one clarification. Aye vote means we're taking it out, correct? Okay, thank you.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Okay, we have the amended motion on the floor right now for the approval of the city licenses minus Timbuk 2. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, ask clerk, take the roll call vote on amended 14-248.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Takes us to Resolution 14-249, approval of block party request Roar Avenue between Lane Street and Lake Winnebago, June 6, 2014. Anyone want to speak to that? See no one come forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-249.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanski?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period 7.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, director of the city manager and future agenda items. Future agenda items, the sex offender workshop, June 10th at 5 o'clock. Put that on your calendars.
I do have one. Question or comment?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
For this workshop, we had a similar workshop about a year ago with neighbors from the middle village. Representative Hints was there, Senator Godex was there, there are people from the state. I can't think of the name of the department. Will those people be invited to this workshop? They should be invited to this workshop as well.
I believe that the chief had talked about somebody from the Department of Corrections. I don't know if they've confirmed yet. This wasn't intended to be a meeting of the neighbors because no, it's no one neighbor, but the Department of Corrections, my understanding was they provide a very good general overview.
They did, and I think some, Hints would be good to have here too, and Senator Godex.
Now, are you looking to have input from these people and to have it open because we got 45 minutes? I thought the idea of this particular one was to lay out.
I'd like to hear them, have them hear our concerns because they can have, they can make things happen in Madison, but I don't think they can.
Because there are more neighborhoods than just this one involved in this.
Right, but this is the whole city, but they should be there at this workshop to hear our concerns as a city.
Okay. Okay. Strategic planning workshop, July 8th or 9th. Evidently from the calendars that were passed in, those were the two dates that come up. I know I have, I do have a preference for the 8th.
I have problems with the 8th also. The 9th would work better for me.
You have a problem with the 8th?
Yes, I do.
I do as well, Mayor.
With the 8th?
Yes.
So our little questionnaires didn't work so well. What about the 9th?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Good.
I know I will be running late because there's a predetermined meeting on that date with GOE DC, so.
I'll have to figure that out, too.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out. We did discuss the possibility among staff that we would try to, try to work that if the council ultimately chose that time. Some introductory information, but we'd probably start it a little bit later to get, so that that we wouldn't be too late for that.
Okay, so we look at July 9th. So July 9th is the date?
Uh huh.
Okay. On the calendars, that'll be a thing. Now, we're going to do that at?
We are still working with the university on where to go. Originally, we'd been, we went to Sage Hall two years ago, the online welcome center. We're still working out if we can get some kind of deal. So it's either there or at the convention center depending on where we can get the best deal.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
So what are the approximate hours you're thinking?
Nine to five. With it being on the 9th, it won't be at 8:00. It won't be as early, so nine to five is probably what we're looking at.
Okay. Next item is review of survey results on preferences for pedal pub ordinance. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get a lot of responses, but, and so I can't say I've got a real consensus on that. We didn't give you a deadline for it. I was hoping to talk a little bit about it tonight. So with only three responses in, I can tell you that most of them said about having alcohol in the pedal pubs. Some said yes, some said no, and that's kind of a crucial issue there. There are people, but a lot of different preferences. Clearly, there's more than just following the state statute if you want to do it. They want, clearly, there's more preference to having restricted area, noise restrictions, limits of how much is carried on, prohibition of anything other than plastic or cans, avoid breakable things. Those are the things that I saw with that. There are some obvious things that all the council members who replied talked about, you know, making sure that we're protecting city assets, don't block fire hydrants, don't disrupt things. But the real key issue is liquor or no liquor, or I should say fermented malt beverages or not. They cannot be sold on the unit itself. That's not allowed by the law. It really is, can you carry it on, bring it with you? That's really the issue. You can decide if you want that to be associated with an establishment or not. There wasn't real clear consensus there, but clearly there is consensus, if you have it, you want to restrict hours and in those types of things. I would ask council members to, you know, fill out the survey. Couple council members just took the piece of paper that Janet sent you and just circled it. That's exactly what we were looking for, so. But at this point, it's too early to give you a full consensus of the council that we could draft an ordinance at this time.
I think probably the most critical item on there is alcohol or not, because if there's no alcohol, it changes what you do. And if we as a council want alcohol, then there are probably a number of other restrictions. So do we have a feeling for alcohol or not alcohol, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's going to make, that's going to make a big difference here in terms of what you do, because if you say no alcohol, the rest of this is basically moot.
Yeah, it's just in a, I think it's just an outright prohibition than, that we put in place. I think, I guess, my sense in receiving this information here is that there were a couple council members who were looking at some kind of a model that had restrictions and regulations on it. I think if we can just agree among ourselves that the debate, when this comes before council is really going to be, is this, are we going to allow alcohol or not going to allow alcohol? Can we, in the meantime, tailor what those regulations would be if alcohol were to be allowed? Can those, can those councilors who are maybe down, don't write, set on not allowing alcohol right now, at least maybe help agree to craft, craft some of those prohibitions that we would put in place?
Mayor, I have a question of the city attorney. We allow open intoxicants on this pedal pub thing, are we not violating our own city ordinance of open intoxicants? Wouldn't we be, because a local municipality can't violate their own ordinance, and right now, we don't allow open intoxicants. This would be the same, right?
The state statute has a specific provision in it. When they passed this, it said your, you know, any existing ordinances related to open intoxicants do not apply to this unless you specifically go back and re-adopt them. So right now, right now, we don't have a, an ordinance, we have an open intoxicants ordinance, but because of that provision in the statute, when they passed this law, it would not apply to this. So right now, someone could have a pedal pub in town here and they could have fermented malt beverages on it.
Second question I have on that is, we only have so many liquor licenses. Would, how, do they have to get a liquor, would by law, do they have to have a liquor license?
No.
They don't?
No.
Because they're not selling the product?
Correct.
I have one question. Have we talked to other communities in the state that do have this and what have their results been? Good, bad, or indifferent?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's very new, so there are very few municipalities that have something. I know that Milwaukee was looking at it. I have not spoken to anyone down there. Madison does have an ordinance in place and they have at least one business that's operating. They were one of the ones that was, I guess, you know, pushing the statute to change to allow that operation, and they do have an ordinance already in place. My understanding is Appleton is coming forward with a recommendation from their licensing committee that they, they don't want to have fermented malt beverages on it. I know Hudson was also drafting an ordinance, and I know there are a couple other municipalities that are looking at it, but it's relatively new. I mean, it passed in December with a 1-1 effective date. Nobody was riding pedal pubs for many months here until now. So until the weather got warm, people really weren't, I think, worrying about it. So everybody's kind of scrambling all at the same time right now.
I did a little, at least internet research on it, and that was exactly it. In fact, Madison didn't, we were talking about the Madison ordinance, but I don't even know if that's fully passed yet, because they were talking about, because they had pedal pubs, but no alcohol for a while.
For a while.
So they had their ordinance, and then Milwaukee, I don't think has done theirs yet from what's being said, at least out there on.
I don't believe Milwaukee has passed.
On the internet, so there's no real history to see what, how things have worked out at this particular point in time.
What about other states? I mean, there's 49 other states, is this?
Twin cities, there's been some, some things going on in twin cities, but they're starting to have second thoughts about it.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I mean, what have cities done with, outside of Wisconsin, too? What have their results been?
Okay. Other comments? Okay, so the one thing, think about the alcohol, I think Mr. Fitzgerald's comment's good. Assume, you know, circle or don't circle, there's no alcohol, whatever you want, but assume for the rest of the questions that alcohol would be there, because you almost need to. Assume that to make any sense out of the rest of the, of the comments that are on there. Also, in our packets, not in our packets, but in our files tonight that we got, there is a letter on quadricycles. The other thing I would say is that if you do go out on the internet, there are a couple of different issues. If you look up pedal pubs, you get a whole litany of sites to look at. If you look up quadricycles, you get another litany, but they're very different in terms of what they do. Quadricycle, pedal pub is one kind of quadricycle. If you look for regulations on quadricycles, which are originally presented to us as quadricycles, there are a whole host of other things involved with quadricycles and other kinds besides pedal pubs. So we got to keep in mind what we're, what we're talking about here when we get to that. Okay. Anything else? Seen nothing else there. We'll move on. Okay, review and direction of inactive combination Class B licenses. There are four. What I think is being looked for is direction as to whether or not we want to have hearings. I think we have people representing three of these, so maybe we'll listen to, I'll ask for council suggestion here. We asked for the individuals involved, if they want to make comments on kind of what the status is now. This would not be a hearing. Is that appropriate? Is that okay? If we get some input? If we just got input, spend a few minutes telling us what your view of the status is. It's not the hearing, so it's not really a lot of questions. After that, we'll come back and then we'll want to indicate whether or not we want to set up hearings, in which case then people would be invited again, and it would be a formal hearing with formal questions with a formal decision. We're not here to make any decisions tonight, but it might be helpful to have input from the people most directly involved. So, Mr. Cinders?
Steve Sisnawski, 1625 Maricopa. I received a letter here inviting me tonight to discuss the status of my Class B license. And as of now, I'm going to be using the Class B at Cinders on Main Street, and it's going to stay there. I'm not going to offer it with the, with the 9th Street location. I've been using that license, actually, I had two licenses last year. One was supposed to be my class for the beer and the wine. That's my first license that I had and paid for. Then the liquor license I paid for and transferred it from Sisters to Cinders, so I had two of them going at one time. I felt that they were going to reimburse me on the wine and the beer license because of the fact that I paid for the liquor, and that's when the council approved to relocate it to 1002 North Main. And as of now, we're going to start using it. We have been using it, not with the liquor, but we've used it under the Class B for purchasing my beer and so forth. I'm just going to transfer my liquor from Sisters over to Cinders because I have abundance of it. So at this time, I don't need to buy from the liquor companies, but we are going to use it, and I'd like to keep it.
Go ahead. Senator, we just wanted to input at this point.
I'd like to clarify, there's, you can't have two licenses for one address. So at the point that the council transferred the combination Class B license, we reduced that and we had you pay for the combination Class B, so you actually only had one license.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
So there was only one payment. There was, you were not double billed. There was not a question of double billing there.
Thank you.
Okay, how about taboos?
My name is Casey Mower with Remax 24/7. I actually represent First National Bank. They're the lender that foreclosed on the property located at 942 West 9th Street. When they foreclosed on the property, they were led to believe not by the city of Oshkosh, but by the owner of the property at that point in time, that the fully engaged liquor license was in play. Now, that may not have changed their decision on the foreclosure of the property. However, is their real estate agent not having a liquor license tied to that property or an alcohol licensed beer property, beer license certainly holds back the saleability of the property. We've had several calls since I've listed the property on the market for sale, and the first question is, is there a beverage license available to that location? When the answer is, there may be, however, I can't speak for the city of Oshkosh, and presently, my client is not in possession of the license. That certainly holds back the sale from going forward. At this point in time, we do not have a buyer, so nor am I asking for the, a buyer for a liquor license. However, we're asking for a public hearing for the purpose of having a license available for that location.
I'll ask a question over here. Do locations have a liquor license, or is there a name that has a liquor license?
That address has the liquor license, the location.
And where is that liquor license at this point in time?
At 642 West 9th Avenue.
Okay, I thought he said it wasn't there.
Is there one in place for 642 West 9th?
Currently, there is a license there.
Oh, so I was misinformed by my client. I apologize.
That's correct.
Claudette Morrison, the agent making application then for the new liquor license. I guess I'm confused, if there's a liquor license in play and my client made application for a new license, what is the protocol that the city of Oshkosh?
There's a license issued to that premises that will expire June 30th of this year. The bank, since I reported to the council at the last council meeting, has filed the paperwork to take over that liquor license. We have to publish it, and it'll come to council. But this was already in the works to have a representative come.
Do we issue a liquor license to a non-operating business?
No.
So this is in effect, there is no business operating there, right?
You approved the license last year, but I didn't physically issue it to anybody. It's a two-step process. You as the council approve it, I as clerk issue it.
So then, there has been a liquor license that's been available to that property for a year, which could have been marketed?
Well, we didn't have the property on the market for a year. I've had the property on the market for 45 days.
And we don't know whether the owner was trying to sell it or not.
I can tell you, I took possession of the listing of that contract within 45 days of the bank clearing up any title issues that would preclude them from selling it.
I think, I think to clarify, Mayor, a little bit, I think we did that with Mr. Sisnawski last year. We extended his license, I believe, for Sisters because he had it on the market. There was some interest. When that failed to come to fruition, then it was, he had, the only option was to transfer. So we, I guess, to answer Mr. Cummings' question, I think we have, kind of, because again, that, as he says, and he's correct, it's hard to sell a tavern if you don't have a liquor license. So I think we have done that with the option that, you know, they get a time to sell, and if it doesn't sell, just like the spot, we pulled it. It's a tough call, because it, you know, I think any of us that would go into that business without a license, it'd be pretty difficult to sell it. But at the same time, we don't want to give out a license that's cherished in the community and then have it sit empty forever, too, so.
And that's really what the hearing would be about.
Yes, right.
We're not having a hearing tonight. We're just getting it, we're just trying to figure out what the status is, and we will decide whether or not we want a hearing, at which we'll get into those issues.
Right. Correct. That's correct.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Walice, now's the time.
I'd like to apologize for my outburst throughout my first city council meeting.
That was fine.
My name is Paul Alwork. I live at 405 East Larabee Street, Ammer, Wisconsin. I own Walice Pub, 458 West 6th Ave. I've been aggressively marketing the property since last June, and I really haven't been lowering the price a lot, but what I really would like is some time to market it. I've been lowering the price quite regularly, but if, listed with Kevin Pertel from the premier group till June 30th, and if he can't sell by then, I'd just like to have an auction and give it to the highest bidder with the liquor license. Like the gentleman before me said, if you don't have a liquor license with your tavern, it's useless. So basically, I just want some time. I'd say, I would, with Kevin till June 30th, if he can't sell by June 30th, I would probably just, there's an online auction place that does online auctions, I would just put it on auction for 30 days, and so if they'd give me like till August 30th, I would be rid of it. Nobody wants to get rid of it as much as I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then the question before us is, do we want to have hearings on one, two, or three of these? That's really the question before us, at which time then would be a formal hearing, which we'd listen and have discussion about it here and then make a decision about what we're going to do.
Just, just a question for city clerk. You propose a hearing at the next council meeting, or first?
Yes, it would be, because the idea, the only purpose that you would have a hearing would be to not renew their license. If you simply just want to renew their license, we'll put it on the agenda for approval next time. If you want to consider revoking the license, then you would want to have a hearing so that we give them their due process to, to make their case at that time.
But also, the hearing would be also to help make that decision.
Correct.
So you don't, you don't make the decision and then decide about the hearing.
Would some of the questions asked during a hearing include, are taxes up to date? Are there any outstanding citations on the property for its condition, that type of thing?
Those issues are typically addressed at the issuance of a license, so hopefully, if they know what's good for them, they'll do that, because you can't get, typically, you don't get a license, period, unless you're up to date with all those things.
But those are things we could ask at that time.
Correct.
I think we'd like to know that at the hearing.
And if we, if we decide not to have a hearing on any one of these three, they would just, we'd have them on the agenda for renewal then next, next meeting?
Exactly. Exactly.
Question, I have one, one more question.
Sure.
Does our ordinance, not knowing it, I mean, in its entirety, does our ordinance allow a grace period or is it either you renew it or you revoke?
What we've been following is a year of inactivity.
Right.
The way, the, the decision before you would be, it's not revoking, it would be non-renewal. So, you would, the decision will be, you're either going to renew the license or you're not going to renew the license, so.
So, so we don't have the, have an option in our ordinance that says, because the facility's up for sale, we'll give them a six-month extension? It's either a year or nothing?
You would have to go back and add the end of that time or whatever time, it would be, at that point, it would be a revocation hearing.
Is that prior to a year? So, in the instance where the gentleman for Walleyes said that he's just asking for a, an extension through 30 August, could we, after one September, come back and say, nothing's happened? At that point, we hold a hearing for a revocation, or a, a hearing for revocation?
You could because what you would do is you would renew the license at this time and then in August or whenever your date is, you would give us direction that you want it brought before you for a revocation at that time for not operating for that one-year period.
And, and would that be, would that notice be built into the, the renewal of the license, so to speak? Can we put that in and say, we're doing it for, so there's no questions at that point? It's not required, but that's not a bad idea. You don't have to do that. It's just that I think the folks who are in this situation, the, the real odd situation and the mayor and I were talking about this this morning is, what we've typically done, we've only looked at this on an annual basis, right at this time of the year, and there's somebody who could close in August and a whole year, 11 months would pass, and technically, we wouldn't bring it to you because it's only been 10 or 11 months, which is unfair for somebody who closes in June. You come back a year later, it's been a full year, therefore, you, you've been inactive. It would make more sense to do what you're suggesting because then, everybody's on an even keel. If they're inactive for a year, if you, I think it may be appropriate to get direction from the council on that. So, at that year anniversary of inactivity, we start the process for revocation and the folks can come and make their case to the council. We're actively marketing it. We've got a Realtor. We don't have a Realtor. We're doing this, we're doing that. And then the council could make that call. To me, it would make, it would make more sense from a fairness standpoint to give everybody the same year. That means we gotta kind of keep it on the radar screen so that we know when a year's up, but then we would bring it to the council within a year.
What are thoughts?
I would think we need to have a hearing for all three of these.
I would agree.
Anybody disagree with that, we'll put it that way. Want to argue against having a hearing for all three?
I would, I would support that, other than if Mr. Sisnowski already has his liquor permit and it's already there, why are we revoking it?
Because it has.
He was on the, I mean, it's a misunderstanding, I think. He was on the impression that he had two licenses and that he could only have the Class B and he was waiting for the Class B to expire. So, you know, it's, I, I believe it's a little more of a misunderstanding on his part, but at the same time, he's already got the license. He stated he was going to be using it currently or whatever, so what's he going to tell us? That he hasn't already told us?
There's, there's more questions in my mind about how he intends to use it, so.
Mr. Mayor, technically.
I would look for all three.
He has been using his, if he's been serving fermented malt beverages, that would have been done under that license. He may not have been fully using the license because he, if he had the combination Class B license to serve intoxicating liquors as well, but if he was serving fermented malt beverages, that's the only license he had. He was using that license.
Yeah, and I, I didn't, I, I don't think it's necessary to have a hearing with Mr. Sisnowski. If, if there is some other disagreement at the council, though, I think probably hearing's the best time to have these discussions. I, I do think there's a hearing. I, I would like to see a hearing for the other two properties.
Where do other people stand?
I don't think it's necessary for Mr. Cinders to have a hearing.
I agree.
But the other two, I would like to have a hearing.
I prefer to have, I prefer to have the hearing because of the way, because it's really hasn't been used for two years and there may be some other businesses out there who'd like to know how he wants to use it. So, we're just going to use it to sell excess alcohol that he has left in the other place rather than buy new alcohol. I'd like to know more about that, but I'm in a minority.
Let's, well, let's.
I think, as I said, I think all three should have a hearing.
I agree. All three.
I'm for three. We're.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, let's, let's do it since we're having a debate and that's probably the more appropriate time to have a discussion, so.
Okay, I think we're looking at all three. Unless Lynn's telling us, was there an issue, there's some discussion over there?
Well, the issue is, since Mr. Sisnowski's disclosed, he has been using it. He hasn't been using it to its full capacity.
We are, I'm, by statute, required to give them a notice stating what the reason would be, what, what they violated. If he's technically been using the ordinance, I don't know what grounds to use for the notice as to what the hearing is for.
I thought we were having this because we've been told it hadn't been used. He had not been, it had not been used. That was the understanding, which I came to the meeting tonight when I asked the questions. That was where I came from. If you're telling me that's not the circumstance, then it's a different issue. So, I don't know where to go from there, Heather.
Wasn't, wasn't the issue at last council meeting was more that he was only serving beer and wine? He wasn't serving hard alcohol, which that's a Class A license, correct? No?
Class A is for packaged goods, sale of packaged goods.
No, it's Class B and C.
B, I've been out of law for too long, remember. But if he's selling beer and wine, he's using the license, right? Whether how he chooses, he uses license, I mean, he could.
Probably, I guess, the more accurate, he's not maybe fully using the license.
Right. But any of these establishments could turn out to say, we're just going to be a beer bar and sell beer and whatever, but they have the license to serve other alcohol, but they choose not to. Who are we to tell?
But if he's not using the, the license as, as intended and somebody else may have a need for it, it has, that license is kind of locked up and not being used. I suggest we have a hearing and.
I don't know if we can have a hearing. That's what's being said.
I just need to understand the grounds then.
The grounds are that it's, it's not necessary to be using this license for the purpose that he's selling, what he's selling it for. He doesn't need the full Class B license.
I'm, I'm looking for legal assistance here because I, I, I had a different understanding when I came in and when I asked the question.
Yeah, this is all new.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest that the council schedule the hearing and we'll, we'll do additional research.
Schedule a hearing, get some more information and then if we have to cancel it at that night, we can do that at that night or just go forward with it, so. Okay, so we'll have three hearings, three hearings next time, so my hope is people would be there at that particular point in time. All right, citizen statements to council. Again, once, again, if you have something you'd like to say about the city, it's time to come up. Please give us your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes. Direct the comments to council. Nothing on the agenda that we've already talked about and no election area. Yes?
I wanted to speak when you guys were talking. That's why we both had our hands up.
We're, that's really not for discussion.
Okay, I'll bring it up at the next meeting. I come to you this evening in regard to, had the city workers out past today. I called Mr. Pottek's office and the young lady brought some supervisors out. Due to the tree companies coming down the road, they're breaking up the road. Mr. Pottek probably knows one of the supervisor's names, kind of husky-billed. He came to me today, we're sitting there talking, he's going to repair the roads. He wants to know why we keep, the city keeps putting dirt, grass seed, why the people are at the treatments, parking all over that. Why are we investing money when there can go out in vandalism by what they're doing? They're not on the blacktop. We had the police out there a few nights ago. I was coming home with a neighbor and the neighbor didn't want to get involved with the police because I was bringing him home. I said, Chris, that's fine, we'll take you home. Gentleman looked at me, he says, you have a bad day? I said, no. And I picked up the phone and I called the police. This gentleman from the drug treatment center or the clinic is driving on private property. It means not the terrorists, they're up on the property. He said, my van's too wide. I can't, too long. I can't, wide and long, I can't make the turn. The cop asked me, he said, well, what are you doing here? I said, that's Michelle. Michelle has talked to us and talked to a few neighbors that have cameras and mentioned this and us neighbors really want to get down to the bottom and I don't think Chief Groyle was here. It's like the police are not listening. So, Michelle, they put up, the officer said, well, maybe Michelle should put up a no trespass private property. Well, she didn't put it up. The treatment center put it up. Well, night before last, it was Wayne and Chris's property. They have it on camera. And then I heard that they might be putting up some cameras. I mean, that would be great if the treatment people are going to do it because there's problems going on. Her approach is all being deroted by backing in and out of the driveway and kicking it up. But I know the city's getting tired, too. They want to be good neighbors to the railroad, want to be good neighbors to us. I thanked the guys today for cutting the grass. They've apologized because it didn't look right, but they still cut it wet and it's a shame. And somebody in our area is using a firearm. It's illegal to use a firearm in the city of Oshkosh. If they want to do what they're doing, just remember the police are watching. The evidence was thrown in our yard. It's a shame. And I would like to invite all you guys out, Monday night, next Monday night, kids will be starting their go-karts out at the fairgrounds. Bring your kids out, you can have a good time and at the races and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else? No one? Bring it back up here for the city manager announcements and statements, 215 budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Director Larson has provided council with a draft agenda or draft calendar as well as schedule. The one that probably drew out, draw to your attention first, last year, we had multiple workshops even before the budget was submitted to council to get some background. And Ms. Larson has identified in July, the potential for a council workshop on July 22nd. By that time, we can give you some ideas on projections for revenues expenditures as well as talk to council about parameters for personnel costs, which make up three-quarters of our, our budget. So, that's really what I'm looking for right now. When do you want to get the, the ball rolling on this? It sounded like from last year that the pre-budget submittal workshops were as effective, if not more effective for council than, than the budget workshops themselves after the budget was submitted. So, is, is the council's wish that you'd like to continue those types of workshops?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a consensus.
Consensus, very good. The calendar's there, you know, because of delays that we typically get with the state on revenues, we're still not looking to have the, the formal budget document delivered to council until, until somewhere in the first, about the 14th of October. So, by your first council meeting, the idea is by your first council meeting, you have the formal budget document. But the more we can talk about beforehand, you'll have a good idea of what we're expecting. So, we don't normally ask for formal council approval of the calendar, just more, this is where we're going with, but we will shoot for July 22nd to really kick things off. You'll see that we've got some things going on with department heads in advance of that. Ms. Larson wants to do some training with departments, particularly on estimating personnel costs, which we've identified as an issue that we really want to work on more with the staff. Any questions about the calendar? Yes?
Just a comment and a reminder that, you know, after the last, I don't know, a couple of, couple of budget years with like the CIP and taking a look at that, we had asked that perhaps going into this year's budget, when it came to the CIP, that each department had then listed by priority so that when we got it, we knew what was priority from top to bottom. So, if we did have to make any decisions about perhaps, you know, we, we would know from Public Works, we would know for Parks, we would know from each department, what exactly is absolute, absolute priority.
Yes, I do recall that and part of the calendar calls for the, the budget document to be really delivered to the plan commission and effectively for council availability, not necessarily approval, but availability around September 1. We've got a more ambitious schedule with that. Mr. Pottek and Ms. Larson and I will be meeting because of lion's share of the capital improvement program is, is in Mr. Pottek's realm.
I think it's, it's helpful, too, with that priority. I mean, you know, certainly, you know, one of the things that I had noticed was just in the communication with the workshop is, you know, staff deals with these issues and know what the priorities are and understand kind of what's going on. They deal with it day to day. You know, we really don't talk about those projects really until the budget comes forth or the, you know, and then once it comes to us to approve. So, from theirs, from our standpoint, we really need that education as to why, you know, because I know there was a number of things with Public Works and we didn't understand that one area connects to another area and it made sense to do it now and not put it out two years. So, you know, that would be helpful and certainly the patience with staff on those issues with us would be much appreciated.
Very good.
And to take what the deputy mayor said and step further, even on the equipment purchases, I know last year, there were some equipment items that he worked pretty hard on selling us, purchased because they were needed, but I think the same thing, prioritize on the, on the vehicles and budget, you know, equipment that, that your staff feels that they need. And I think the golf carts was one where it was costing us more money to fix them than it was to get new ones and things like that. So, I think it, it helps all the way around for all of us if everything is prioritized, you know, one through 10 or whatever. And just, I think, helps council because it's, Ms. Allison Osby said, you know, we don't work with those things on a daily basis, but yet, if you don't get a certain piece of equipment, you can't do something. And so, that is an important piece, too.
Very good. Appreciate that feedback.
Other feedback?
Okay. Well, we'll shoot for a, the schedule as, as we identified and we'll, we'll tighten it up and get you more information later, especially about the themes for the, the subsequent pre-budget submittal workshops. A couple of years ago, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance Company put together a video that I think might be beneficial for council. It talks about various responsibilities, particularly if you're in a position where you need to be in a quasi-judicial situation where you're effectively making a determination that may require you to, to limit exposure you have to people approaching you about something that's of quasi-judicial nature. There's also other things in there. I'd like to make the video available for council. I don't think it requires a work session. I would simply, you could check it out from, from Mr. Fitzpatrick's office. You watch it at your leisure, return it, there'll be no overdue fines or anything like that, but just, I think it'd be beneficial. I, I know the mayor's seen it. Steve, you thought you had seen it, so maybe, maybe.
I think the two of us saw it.
Maybe that was, we did that when we were starting some of the orientation, but I don't think Deb or Tom had seen it and I know Sean and Caroline hadn't, but it's a really good overview that kind of goes above and beyond what you may have gotten through the League of Wisconsin, new officials training. So, I'd like to make that available to you. If you want it, just contact Mr. Fitzpatrick's office and we'll, we'll check it out for you. And then lastly, scheduled for hearing for pub crawl special charges. I gave you a brief memo on Friday, but actually, that was already dated by the time you received it. Mr. Kubiak did forward me late Thursday after I'd written that memo, a $2,000 check. That was consistent with his second meeting with me, but the, the bill is not entirely paid. So, that's the first bit of information. The second bit of information is similar to what I told you. Chief Groyle went over his preliminary findings. We've asked Chief Groyle to take another couple of weeks to make sure that we, that he has what he believes, all the appropriate evidence he would need to, to make a case of who was receiving the services that were, were rendered by the police department. Then the city attorney's office will take a look at that to make sure it's passing legal muster from her standpoint. So, I want to make sure the police department's comfortable with it and the city attorneys. You may recall, I was really hoping to get this information to you prior to liquor license renewal. We're not going to be able to do that. And once we knew that we weren't going to be able to do that, I asked the staff to take just a little more time. So, what we're looking at is a potentially be July 22nd, that we would have a hearing on this. That's the, probably the earliest we would do it. Once we know that we have it, it would probably be around the first of July before we would really have those, that information. We want to make sure that we've got all our eyes dotted before we bring this thing forward. But the bill now is from 5800. But the bill now is from 5,800 to 3,800, so however many establishments would be billed, would be, it would be divided into 3,800. That's really all I have on that at this time.
Questions on that, at this point? Okay, brings us to the end. So motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? We're adjourned.